Six o'clock means it's time for our regular, this is the time, July, City Beaver Creek Planning Commission meeting, and I just called it to order. So we'll go for a roll call.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. You may notice that there are only four of us here tonight, and that's because our former colleague, Mr. Schreider, has moved out of the city, even though we told him it wasn't authorized. So we are down to four members, and just as a quick note, our rules state that when we vote on an issue, we must, it must pass by a majority of the commission, and that means a commission of five people, regardless of how many are actually here. So anything that passes must pass with three positive votes. So with that, agenda approval, any additions, corrections, changes, deletions, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was an additional item we wanted to add or requesting to add to seven, add a 7B, Bent Creek Wood Architecturals, and Sandra will go into further explanation, but there was, but we were wanting to get your review on the matter.
And just for everyone's knowledge, the first public hearing that was originally on the agenda, the Swift Coffee Drive-Thru, the applicant has withdrawn that.
That's correct.
So we are down to two public hearings, three subdivisions, and two discussion items.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes, gentlemen. We did not have a July meeting, so we will go for the June minutes. Well, I guess we could approve the agenda first. It's been a tough day, folks.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda with the addition of Discussion Item 7B.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
And we'll do that according to general consensus. Thank you. Now we'll do the approval of minutes. Any additions, corrections, changes?
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I move to pass those minutes?
Thank you.
Second.
And I have a second, and we'll do that by general consensus, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay, we have three public hearings tonight, and, sorry, we have two public hearings tonight. So the first one, as I'm sure why there are a few people here tonight, it's an amendment about our chicken text. Would you like to read that, please?
This is case number PC 20-8 on an application filed by Rachel O'Leary at 1263 Lomita Lane, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45434. The applicant requests a zoning code text amendment to allow chickens in residential districts.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we will first have a presentation by staff, correct?
Applicant.
Oh, applicant first, okay. We do have an applicant here, I presume? There she is. Step right on up, and if you would give your presentation. I wasn't sure whether we had an applicant on that, so I apologize.
No, you're fine. I am Rachel O'Leary, so I am the applicant. I want to thank you all for your time this afternoon, for allowing us to come and speak. We're going to kind of cover some basics of chicken myths and misconceptions, as well as how it would affect the community of Beaver Creek. This is basically a summary of the proposal, the zoning amendment we submitted. I won't go in too much detail, because I'm sure Randy will cover some of those. It would be basically a six-chicken, hens-only, limit, no roosters, and I'm sure we'll cover that in more detail later. I won't go through each bullet. Basically, where would you want your eggs to come from? Backyard chickens are a more humane and healthy supplier of eggs. It's more humane for the animal, and it offers assortment, a lot of different benefits to the community and to the citizens of Beaver Creek. Currently, there's a lot of cities that welcome backyard chickens. Close by, there's Xenia, Yellow Springs, Cincinnati, Columbus, Cleveland, as well as across the country, you have Miami, Florida, New York City, New York, Los Angeles, Chicago, and there's many, many, many more. Actually, over 80 of the nation's largest 100 cities allow backyard chickens. I know it's common to have a rule versus urban argument here, but really, this kind of takes that off the table. There's a lot of myths around chickens. One is, aren't chickens loud? They're actually as loud, at their loudest, they're the same decibel level as a human conversation. So in comparison, a dog can reach over 90 decibels. Chickens at their loudest are between 60 to 70. Aren't chickens full of diseases? Chickens, just like any animal, carry bacteria, including humans, for that matter. So simply washing your hands after handling them is enough to easily prevent disease. Aren't chickens dirty? That's a common misconception. Chickens themselves aren't inherently dirty. It's all about how they're properly cared for. Just like with cats and dogs, it's all about the cleanliness and how you take care of them. Actually, they reduce diseases by eating insects that carry other disease. Won't this cost the city money? Currently, we're based on a complaint-based system, where all chicken ownership is illegal, and as there's complaints, the chickens are then handled by the city. By legalizing them, it would be in the same complaint-based way, however, it would only narrow down to the citizens that are being negligent in caring for their chickens. So I've noticed with a lot of people, I actually communicate with the city of Xenia, and they actually break even, if not save a little money, by legalizing chickens. There's currently people that have illegal chickens, even here in Beaver Creek. And at least with permits and other oversight, it would be able to help offset the cost to the city. Aren't chickens smelly? Chickens themselves actually don't smell. The coops and the runs need cleared, cleaned regularly, just like cat litter boxes or your yard, if you have a dog. So for a comparison, it takes 10 chickens to make just 2/3 of the amount of waste of a 140-pound dog. Chickens attract predators, another misconception. Chickens don't attract any more predators than wild animals that are domestic, for that matter, that are currently in our community. Squirrels, cats, dogs, rabbits, wild birds and mice are all subject to predators. Also, chickens are kept in predator-resistant coops at night, unlike other small animals. Aren't chickens a lot of work? It's actually a very small amount of work. This is probably a little bit of an overestimate, but 30 minutes a day, that's food, water, collecting eggs. Weekly, you would need to clean out their droppings and replace their nesting or bedding, and then once or twice a year, you would do a deep clean or disinfecting of the coop. Don't chickens attract bugs, like flies? They actually eat bugs. Particularly, they love maggots and flies, and they actually are a natural deterrent to mosquitoes, as well as eating them. Don't chickens require special food? They do require special food, just like cats and dogs do. However, they are also able to eat chicken-friendly fruits and vegetable scraps. What happens to chickens when they're no longer wanted? You would rehome them the same way you do other pets. So by legalizing chickens in Beaver Creek, they'd be able to create a community where they could be rehomed within Beaver Creek. You could also reach out to local farms and other communities like Xenia and Yellow Springs to rehome them. Chickens are also unique in that you could also eat chickens, if they no longer were wanted, unlike a cat or a dog. Aren't chickens farm animals? The CDC actually classifies backyard chickens as both urban and suburban pets, as well as farm animals. It's really about quantity here. So six chickens, hardly a farm. 200 chickens, obviously, that's a farm-type of enterprise there. The benefits of chickens to the community would be creating self-reliant citizens who aren't so dependent on commercial egg farms. I know all of us probably, to some degree, experienced some supply chain interruption with the COVID-19 pandemic. So by being able to provide even the most simple protein, which is the egg, for families, individuals here in Beaver Creek, I think is really important. It's important more than now than ever to be more self-sufficient and not completely reliant on commercial business. Children could also participate in 4H projects. It allows people to feel a stronger connection to their community and nature. It's kind of a way to unplug from our device-driven culture and get back to kind of a simpler task and time. They're also great pets. They recognize their owners. They can be trained. They actually recognize up to 100 different human faces. It would also encourage residents to get outside more, enjoy a healthy hobby. From young children to elderly, chickens are very easy to care for. It would help children understand where their food comes from and understand the concept of sustainability. And across the country, I know a lot of us have noticed a food movement where locally and responsibly sourced food has become more and more prevalent, not only in our grocery stores, but also in our restaurants. This is a way for Beaver Creek to market itself as kind of a hub in the dating area of urban agriculture and supporting this movement. Statistically, chickens are actually more likely to be allowed in higher property value areas than in lower property value areas. It's kind of a progressive urban movement, and yeah, I was actually surprised by that fact. That's kind of an arguing point for a lot of people. Many residents actually moved to Beaver Creek to be outside of a congested city. We're surrounded by rural area. Green County itself is a more rural county. So I think the people really, it's a way to honor the past. Many of our neighborhoods and subdivisions neighbor or were built on top of old farmland. Many of our ancestors farmed here. So it's kind of a nod and an honor to the past for Beaver Creek citizens. Residents shouldn't have to fear being reported for their chickens if they're keeping them responsibly with no protection from the city. So this causes both stress for the family and the animals. You know, you've bonded with them at that point. They are a pet. They've received individual attention and care from you. It's also better to regulate them than waiting on complaints from neighbors. So you're kind of leaving both groups out a little bit. You're not allowing protection for people that responsibly want to keep them, and you're also not providing oversight for those who have reservations about chickens in general. So by legalizing them, you'd be able to kind of provide a compromise to both groups. And they also provide an excellent pet alternative. Chicken allergies are actually very rare. Dog and cat allergies are the two most common types of pet allergies. So for those who can't keep dogs or cats, you can have chickens. They provide insect control without pesticides. They'll even eat mice. Some people say better than cats. And chickens will receive, of course, a better quality of life, life of dignity, more so than in a commercial egg farm. Waste can be fertilized and used in your garden and flower beds, unlike dog and cat waste, which carries parasites. It's much better for the environment, and it would result in less food waste for the community, as chickens love chicken-safe fruits and vegetables that they can eat. Actually, a flock of four chickens can eat over 33 pounds of food waste a year, which is pretty impressive. These are some fun facts about chickens. I'll just cover a couple of them. One is they actually experience REM sleep, so they actually dream. They understand cause and effect, object permanence. They pass on knowledge, and they worry. They're actually the closest living relative to the Tyrannosaurus Rex, which, who doesn't want to own a miniature dinosaur? And ownership of poultry as pets has increased 23% over the past five years, and COVID-19 pandemic has also contributed to the popularity of backyard chickens across the United States. People just want to be more self-sufficient. Chickens don't require a lot of medical care. However, if they were, we do have an assortment of local veterinarians right here in the Beaver Creek area that could treat them, so that already exists. I also reached out to several cities that allow or are working towards allowing backyard chickens, and these were two gentlemen that I reached out to. They have an extensive experience professionally with backyard chickens and urban agriculture. So if you guys wanted to talk to them, reach out to them. City-to-city employee, they provide a unique perspective. There's a lot of organizations that support backyard chickens, one being the Humane Society of the United States. They support any measure that reduces the suffering of animals, and so they endorse backyard chickens as a way of eliminating or reducing the purchase of commercial eggs, where often there's inhumane treatment. And that is it for me.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very comprehensive.
Yeah.
We all know more about chickens now.
So.
Now, it's staff's turn.
It's kind of a tough act to follow. I don't have much to say now, and I had no idea that chickens eat mice. That's interesting. The case you have before you is PC 20-8. Again, it's the chickens in residential districts. Just a little bit of history, this same issue was brought forward to Planning Commission City Council both in 2012 and 2016, and the main concerns were the cleanliness and the noise from the neighbors' perspectives. As the applicant alluded to, there is proposed language included in your packet for your consideration, should you choose to approve the applicant's request. And among them, the lot size, in order to have residential chickens, the lot size in the proposed regulations require the lot to be larger than 15,000 square feet. If it's less, then you couldn't have any, and then if it's larger, 15,000 square feet or larger than, you can have up to six chickens. But no roosters, and not in multifamily projects as well, so not in condos or apartment complexes. Also, the coops within the residential districts need to be made out of wood, composite, or vinyl material, a solid material, and not, you know, like a aluminum shed or something like that. Also, it needs to be designed so that it prevents the rodents or predators from entering the coop and being a nuisance on the property. Also, there's a requirement that the, any coop be a minimum of 20 feet from the property line, which is above and beyond what a typical accessory structure, which is allowed to be within 10 feet of the side property line. So this would be a double that regulation. Also, they would be required to, there would be a two-step process to be able to get the proposed chickens. One would be, they would have to, you know, apply for accessory structure for the coop, and there is a maximum square footage in each property allowed. It's based on the footprint of the house and the size of the lot, but that would count towards that maximum square footage. Also, prior to introducing chickens into the coop, they would need to get a license to keep residential chickens, and our thinking there was, if for some reason, and I'm not saying, I wouldn't expect this to happen, but just in case, if there was like, they weren't following the regulations or anything, it would be a lot easier for us to say, you need to remove the chickens and revoke the license, rather than for us to go in and say, you need to get rid of the actual accessory structure, which they have, you know, they have built. So it's a lot easier just to say, you can keep the coop, but you can't have chickens in it. So that's why, that's the reason for the second step in the licensing process. There are two resolutions in your packet for your consideration, one recommending approval to City Council and one recommending denial to City Council. I'll be happy to answer questions following public hearing. Thanks.
Thank you. As this is a public hearing, we will now open it to comments from the attendees here. I would ask you two things, so we aren't here for a significant portion of the evening, to limit yourself to three minutes, and we'll time you. And second of all, if someone before you has already said basically the same thing, if you simply want to come up and say, hey, we're in favor of this, or we're not, that'll make things move along a lot faster. So, without further ado, who wants to be first? We have a, step right on it.
I'll walk up there, I'll just say, I fully support.
Well, they can't hear you over the air. I mean, this is, this is the popular thing on TV right now, and you want to have your three minutes of fame.
Well, it's not TikTok, but I fully support everything that Rachel has put forth. Oh, sorry. Michael Berry, Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Name and your street address, please.
1150 Firewood.
Thank you.
Yes, I fully support everything that Rachel has put forth and support this initiative.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Step right on forward, please, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Haney Barnes, and I live at 3418 Greer Drive, and I agree with everything Rachel said, and we want to be involved in this, and my grandchildren are excited to have chickens, because they have allergies, too. So this is something they want to come over and help with, so we're excited. I have letters from my husband and myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, step right on forward.
My name is Linda Kennedy. I live at 1334 Lomita Lane, and I just want to put my voice out there that I fully support the chicken initiative for Beaver Creek City.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lisa Barack. I live at 1835 Haynes Road, and I fully support with what Rachel has brought forward tonight.
Thank you very much.
My name is Penelope Smith. I live at 1757 Turnbull Road, and I also completely agree with everything about these backyard chickens and fully support this movement. My grandson is really excited about getting some chickens, and I was going to bring him to give his two cents from an eight-year-old's perspective, but he was very nervous about coming in, you know, standing in front of all you all and telling you how excited it would be for him to be able to work with something that isn't a cat or a dog, something that actually gives back, something that, you know, not only do we care for, but they care for us, and learning about the cycle of life in a different way than watching it on TV. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Todd Brock. I live at 1835 Haynes Road, and I 100% stand behind what Rachel's brought forth. It was an awesome presentation, great job, and, I mean, this is a way to be self-sufficient. Maybe not 100%, but if you go to Kroger's or you go to Walmart, which I just went about an hour ago, the bread aisle's wiped out. Like, there's nothing. I mean, it's stale, you know? You can get all the pumpkin pie filling you want and beans, but there's nothing else. Like, the place, you can't even get a bicycle. So my question, not necessarily to the committee here, but to my fellow humans, where do you plan on eating? What do you plan on eating? I have a small garden, so what Rachel said, you know, everything the chicken comes out, other than the egg, goes in the garden. It's free fertilizer. Like, I'm not, you know, we're not using all this stuff to make stuff, for me to go buy stuff, that I can't buy stuff, because the supply chain broke. The wheels fell off, folks. So here's, you know, and six chickens isn't going to save the world, but it'll save me and the wife, because we probably eat two dozens of eggs a week, you know? So wholeheartedly support it. It's a great idea. Once again, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, step right, this isn't school. You don't have to raise your hand.
Just be polite.
Thank you.
My name's Mylan Kennedy. I live at 1334 Lomita Lane, Beaver Creek. I agree with everything Rachel said. She did a great job. One thing that I found doing some homework on chickens, there was a town in Europe, and they did some, they did their homework, and they knew what chickens could do, and they had a waste problem. It was getting into some big money. So they, what they decided to do was they gave every household, gave it to them who wanted one, a chicken. And the townsfolk gave the chickens their food waste, and that town saved over $150,000 a year on their trash. But chickens will eat watermelon rinds, you name it, they'll pretty much eat it. Their, and their manure, as far as going back into the soil and composting, there literally is no odor to that. I mean, I get more odor out of my composter with greens and leaves than I would out of chicken manure. I was a farmer for 35 years, and we raised 200 layers. Man, we milked a lot of cows and farmed, but the point is, I've been around them all my life, and they're not, if you're, if, it's easy to be on the outside and you have a mis, you know, a preconceived conception of what it is like, but it's, it's really not. So if you, if you're around them, they are very, very gentle. I don't have to worry about them getting out and biting somebody like you would a dog. I mean, it strikes me odd that a person can have, you know, 10 vicious dogs, and that's cool, but I can't have four to six chickens. I don't, I don't see how that's correlating. And the other point I want to bring up, and I don't want to eat up too much of my time, but people that are in this room and people that want chickens, it's quite an investment. Coops range from the low end, $300 to $400, up to $2,500, $3,000. So this isn't something people are going to take lightly. They're going to be responsible about it. They've got a major investment in it, and it's more than just a food source, even though that's an important key. But it's getting back to your roots. It's getting back to nature, and so I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian O'Leary, 1263 Lomita Lane. I also support, for multiple reasons, despite the work it's going to cost me. Just be self-sufficient, more self-sufficient, and better for the environment. Like, just great.
Thank you. I think there are going to be a lot of chickens on Lomita Lane if we approve this. Others, don't be shy. Last chance? Did we have written input?
We did. There was a standard letter that came in. We had received 16, with the two additional ones. There's now 18 total. I'm going to go ahead and just read names and addresses. Is that okay? Kristin Neal of 1057 Geneva Road, Neonami Brewer of 3034 Village Green Drive, Lauren Hensley, 4180 Grouse Court, Mylan Kennedy, 1334 Lomita Lane, Linda Kennedy, 1334 Lomita Lane, Penelope Smith, 1757 Turnbull Road, Rachel O'Leary, 1263 Lomita Lane, Brian O'Leary, 1263 Lomita Lane, Lori DiAmico, 4199 Ridge Cliff Drive, Mary Scott, 39, 395 Tanglewood Drive, Jeffrey Scott, 395 Tanglewood Drive, Sarah Fast, 3737 Wild Bird Circle, Mary Beth Henderson, 3717 Wild Bird Circle, Seth and Lorraine Wagerman of 2782 Big Woods Trail, Pavel Tazonka, 37, 372 Merrick Drive, Laura Tazonka, 273 Merrick Drive, and Tammy and Steve Barnes of 3418 Greer Drive.
Thank you. Last chance, if anyone wants to speak. You already did, did you not?
I did, but I sent in a letter. My name was not read out.
And you are?
Michael Berry of Firewood.
There was an O'Leary read, did you not?
No.
Berry.
I'm sorry.
No, I don't have a Berry.
Well, post office must not have delivered it. Last chance? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll, I'll start to my right. Jonathan?
Yes, I have a question for staff. So I know this resolution was brought up before, previously. Where does the 15,000-square-foot lot come from? Is that just an arbitrary number, or?
We were, you have, we were just looking at how average lot sizes in the city and trying to go slightly above the average lot size. You know, that was something that we looked at and added in back in 2012, but, yeah, it was based on, the newer residential developments have a smaller-than-20,000-square-foot lot, and the older residential developments have a 20,000-square-foot lot. So we kind of averaged out that and got around where about half the residential properties could have chickens.
That's all the questions I have now.
I have a question for the applicant. So I think this is a great idea, actually so good of an idea, four years ago, I voted for it. However, City Council turned it down, right?
I know.
It worries me that you're striking through, the one thing that gives them a modicum of power might get the same result with the red, with the strike-throughs that you have, with not giving them the
The sunset clause specifically?
The sunset provision?
Sure.
I feel like, again, I'm in favor of this. If we want to do this written, I just, my suggestion is maybe that's not the right tactic to get it approved by Council, in my opinion on this.
Sure.
I don't know if Council, if they're having that power taken away, to sunset it, that you might end up with the same result we did in 12 and 16.
I understand that.
So that would be my only concern, if you guys want to keep it, I mean, I'll, we'll leave it as written, but that would be my only concern, is that you'll end up with the same result.
My main reasoning for removing the sunset clause is, you're expecting people to make an investment, and this is a pet. I mean, you're, it's essentially the same as removing a dog from a house at that point. You have small children that grow attached to these animals. I think it's almost kind of cruel if, a year from now, it automatically terminates, and all these animals have to be rehomed, and so that was my primary motivation for removing the clause. I understand that it, from negotiation purposes, we may have to.
Yeah, that's what I'm like, I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea. I've got quite a nice garden in my backyard as well, so I totally get that. I think, like a lot of people, we all, if we weren't already, we'd be trying to become more self-sufficient, but that's my only worry, is that you might run into a headwind, and we are back here in six months
I appreciate that.
Trying to figure this back out. So that would be my only, only comment that I would make on this.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Appreciate it. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're certainly welcome.
Yes, to the applicant, I kind of had the same, same stance. If you put a sunset clause at three years, at least, you give the city a chance to adjust. Or raise the square footage. Maybe you don't do a third of an acre, you do that 20,000-square-feet, where, yes, it's lesser homes, but they're also more spread apart. There's less concern about neighbors on top of each other in some of these newer neighborhoods that have the smaller lot size. So that was my only comment.
I guess that leaves me. I had just a couple of thoughts for staff. I seem to recall that either in 2012 or 2015, there was something in the ordinance or in the zoning about that the coop needed to be movable. the, in the zoning about that the coop needed to be movable, so it wasn't sitting in the same spot all the time. It could be moved around the yard, so it wouldn't kill the grass, and it would also help fertilize the yard.
What it was is
Did we take that out?
In 2012, the, the language specifically prevented it from being movable.
Okay.
It was that we wanted, that there was supposed to be chicken wire or mesh buried at least 12 inches in the ground to prevent rodents and predators. But, that was removed in the 2016 version, so that it could be moved around. There's nothing in there that would preclude them from moving the coop around.
Okay. As long as it stays 20 feet from the lot line?
As long as it's 20 feet and to the rear of the
I kind of disappointed the Mr. Chair that we didn't hear about chicken tractors during this present. I believe the last one, we heard about chicken tractors quite often in the movable coops.
I can't speak to the chicken tractors, but, but I can say that, you know, with the regulations that we, that you have in front of you, there's nothing that would preclude them from moving it around, as long as it stayed 20 feet and to the rear of the principal structure.
Okay. Thank you. And for, for my fellow commissioners, something that we might want to look at as a, as a kind of a compromise between the sunset clause and not having anything, is to have it come under review after one year or two years. That way, it's not an automatic, we're not automatically killing it, but we are automatically looking at it to see if it's working as well as our applicant is saying it's going to, which I think we all hope it does. But, that might be a compromise between what was, what has been lined out and, and what we think might get by council. Just a thought. But, I don't, I don't propose, so I'm just making it as a, oh, and Jonathan, I think the 15,000 square feet comes from R1B. R1B zoning is 15,000 square feet, and I think that's probably where staff got that.
Mr. Chair, in the, in the, in the come under review section, would that be us or the council, or could we dictate who reviewed it?
It would probably come to us first, would it not?
It could certainly come to Planning Commission for review first, but then ultimately council.
Right.
Okay.
Still has to be. Because if it's going to get repealed, let's say, or modified, obviously, council would be in the ordinance.
Yeah, if, if, if we're modifying the, the zoning code, it would go through us first. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, I'm looking for a motion.
Sorry, trying to find, we have a lot of items here. Um, do we make the change? Do we not make the change?
The motion, the motion on that one, yeah, if somebody wants to.
I'm in. Mr. Chair, I move to approve PC 20-8 as written.
As written?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second? I'm hearing deafening silence here. Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Let's try this again. Gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend PC 20-8 to include a review in two years in order to reassess.
Okay. By Planning Commission?
By Planning Commission.
So, did you want to put, excuse me, put the sunset provision back in as ordered, except
Not as a sunset.
But as a reassessment.
But as a reassessment.
Reassessment with the language the same, just two years instead of one year?
Correct.
I mean, you could put language to effect that subsection D is C in there, then D would, violation would become D, and just have agreed that these regulations shall be reviewed in two years, as I understand, by the Planning Commission with recommendation to City Council for modification as deemed appropriate.
See why we have a lawyer here, folks?
Eloquent, eloquent, and beautiful in every way.
Melissa, did you get that all?
Our clerk is writing furiously, or typing furiously. Okay, I have a new motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion
Thank you.
With the amended, amended language.
Technically, the motion was to amend it.
Okay.
And then you'll need a motion to
I will second the motion to amend PC 20-8.
Okay.
Do we need a roll?
Okay, well, the first motion died for lack of second. So, this was the second, this was a new motion.
The amendment motion.
This was a motion to amend.
Okay, thank you very much.
A motion to
Why we have a lawyer here, folks? Okay, we're voting on the amendment.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Height.
Yes.
Mr. Self.
Yes. Okay, that passes for zero. Now, we'll vote on the motion.
Mr. Chair, I, I move to approve PC 20-8 with the amended condition, or the amended language.
Mr. Chair, I second.
Thank you. Now, we'll vote on it.
Mr. Meyer.
No.
Mr. Height.
Yes.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes.
Mr. Self.
Yes. Motion carries 3-1. Chickens won this time, we hope. Thank you very much for your input, folks. Really appreciate it. Okay, next, next item is our third, or our second public hearing, Dayton Zania Marathon Food Mart. Just state, just state it.
I'm recusing myself.
Okay. Mr. Meyer is recusing himself from the discussion and voting on this particular item for, due to conflict of interest.
This is case number PC 20-6, Azure Detailed Site Plan on an application filed by NNG Takar, 4365 Lisa Drive, Tip City, Ohio, 45371. The applicant requests an administrative site plan review and approval in Azure for 1.53 acres of land to construct a 6,868 square foot gas station. The property is located at 3810 Dayton Zania Road, further described as Book 2, Page 11, Parcel 13, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Same procedure as we did on the previous public hearing. We'll have a presentation by the applicant, then we'll have presentation by staff, then we'll open it up for comment, and lastly, we will open it up for the three remaining planning commissioners. So, do we have a, a, ah, my golly, I knew we had an applicant here.
My name is Matt Gettis of 10367 Yellow Locust Lane in Centerville, Ohio, and I'm here representing NNG Takar Oil, who is the developer and owner of the property. So, it's our intention to put a marathon station with a potential for rental on the side of it, you know, in the future. And, we've done this successfully all over Dayton. You'll see pictures of one that's close in Fairborn that was completed a couple of years ago. And, we, you know, the owner, Mr. Singh here, has a bunch of stores, and they're all successful, and they're ran clean. They're not selling the pipes or any of the stuff like that that you see in some of the low class. It's all, always a clean, good operation. And really, I, I think that you're going to get the full presentation from the staff, so I don't know what I could add that you're not about to get. So, I don't want to be redundant and waste your time.
Thank you. We'll probably have questions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Before use an application requesting administrative site plan review and approval to allow for the construction of a 6,900 square foot two-tenant building, as well as an accessory gas station canopy at 3810 Dayton Zania Road. The property currently falls within the Dayton Zania corridor revitalization area and does have an overlay. As part of that corridor planning overlay, the property is subject to the Azure review and approval process, which involves two public hearings, one Planning Commission, which makes a recommendation, and then the final decision at City Council. So, the proposed location for the marathon station is at the intersection of North Central Drive and Dayton Zania Road. Currently, there are two lots that make up this proposal. The lot along Dayton Zania Road currently contains a vacant building, which was formerly the Beaver Creek Bar, and then there's also an accessory, a small accessory structure at the back of the property. And then, the, the second property, which is along Southview Street, is just a vacant parcel. So, as part of this application, all of the existing structures, as well as the paved areas, the, the drive aprons and everything will be removed and replaced with new. The current zoning of the property is B2. The properties to the north, south, west, and east are, are all zoned B2. The, the majority of the properties within the Dayton Zania corridor all have that community business designation. Within a B2 zoning district, a gas station, convenience store, are permitted uses. So, this use is a permitted use within this zoning district. It's just that Azure overlay designation allows us to be able to have a little bit of, a little bit more oversight on the architecture and the site planning, but actual use is a permitted use. So, the applicant is proposing to construct a 19-foot-tall building, which is well below the maximum of 35 square, 35 feet tall that is permitted in a B2 zoning district. Let me just get to the elevations here. So, the, the proposed building is approximately 6,860 square feet, and it will be broken up into two separate tenants. So, the Marathon Food Mart will be the 4,168 square foot tenant, and then the proposed future tenant, which there isn't a tenant for it at this time, would be 2,700 square feet. So, the building is proposed to be comprised of varying colors of a tan brick. As the applicant stated, we do have some photos of the gas station that they previously built on, it's on Kaufman Avenue in Fairborn. This building is going to be almost an exact replica, with the exception of an extension out this way of the additional tenant space. And then, of course, it won't have the, the red awning either. But, as far as the, the windows, the brick and all of that, it will be very similar. One of the concerns that we did have, as far as our elevations go, was the rear of the building. It is a pretty significant expanse of brick. So, in speaking to the applicant, we came to a resolution that they would add an inlay, kind of like they have on this corner here, several of them along the back of the building, kind of to, to break it up a little bit and, and give a little bit of, of interest to the back of the building, because the back will be visible. So, we did add that condition into the resolution, and they will need to show us exactly what that will look like before we actually release zoning permits. As far as access points go, there is one proposed access on Dayton Zania Road, directly across from the Auto, Murphy's Auto Care, and then there's also an additional access on North Central Drive. The North Central Drive access will be 24 feet wide. The Dayton Zania Road access will be 36 feet wide, as agreed to by our city engineer. That's in order to accommodate the fuel truck and then any other deliveries, so they don't have to, to maneuver through there. As far as parking goes, the applicant is proposing 27 parking spaces. We do count the parking spaces at each gas pump as a parking space. So, the, the marathon, the food mart portion of the building requires 17 spaces, based on the square footage. That's 15 spaces for the square footage, plus two spaces for the maximum number of employees that they would have at one time. They are proposing 27 spaces, so that leaves 10 additional spaces for the, for the second tenant, the second future tenant. We have let the applicant know that any future certificates of occupancy or certificates of use compliance will have, will take that parking into consideration before they're issued. So, more than likely, something like a restaurant, which requires more parking, is not, is not going to be able to go there. So, that's something that they will have to take into consideration before, before someone signs a lease for that property. We, we won't be releasing any permits if there isn't a sufficient amount of parking. So, that, that condition has been added as well. As far as landscaping goes, they are proposing various trees and shrubs. We are working on currently a road widening project on Dayton Zania Road, which will be completed, I believe, in the summer of 2021. So, the, the landscaping right along Dayton Zania Road probably will not be installed immediately. However, we do have the landscape plan. We will have the bond that requires that that landscaping be installed, and we will hold that bond until that work is done. So, that work just may be delayed slightly until our road project is, is completed, so they're not putting it in, and we're tearing it all out again. The, the road project will include a, I believe, a sidewalk on that side of the road as well, and the city will be putting in their final apron. They'll have a temporary apron in the meantime. They are required to, to have a detention pond, and they are showing that detention pond at the rear of the property. The final calculations will be approved by our city engineer before we release zoning permits. The applicant is also proposing shrubs at the back of the property, just to give a little bit of extra screening along that detention pond. And then, there are a couple of trees that, that the applicant is showing will remain at the back of the property as well. We didn't get a lighting plan at this time for the, for this project. However, we do require that the final plans, final photometric plans be provided to us before we issue zoning permits. We are, we added conditions of approval that require that all of the light poles be located within landscape islands, that the light fixtures be full cutoff light fixtures, and that there be no spillover of light at the, at the rear of the property, because we do have residential across, across the street, back behind Southview Street. The applicant is proposing one ground sign, 35 square foot per side, that will be required to be mounted on a brick base that matches the brick on the, on the building. They're also proposing the digital signs on the canopy. We have added a condition that those signs only be located on the east and the west elevations of the canopy, simply because it, it doesn't make sense to put them on the other ones, since you've got Dayton Zania running east and west. That's who's going to see those. As far as the building goes, they didn't provide any signage for the building, but that will have to meet the standard B2 sign requirement. So, when they do get a new tenant in that second space, they'll follow that B2, B2 requirement. And then, if they decide to put a sign on the building as well, it'll be that same B2 sign requirement. Just a couple of additional conditions that I would like to note. We added condition number 18, which doesn't allow for outdoor speakers, with the exception of the speaker between the gas pump and the cashier. We've also added a condition there not be any outdoor display of goods or merchandise, with the exception of ice and propane. So, there's not going to be any pallets of salt, wood, any of that kind of thing. And, and the applicant has stated that, you know, he's, he's completely on board with that as well. And then, one condition that was not added inadvertently left off, that I would like to add at this time, would be condition number 21, and that is to require that the piers that support the, the canopy be comprised of brick as well, that matches the, the building all the way from the base to the top, similar to what we have in the, in these photos, which is, any of the new gas stations that we've done, we've, we've made that same requirement as well. So, staff is recommending approval of this resolution with the now 21 conditions. And if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Typical, extremely comprehensive report. Makes it a lot easier for us. Okay, this is a public hearing, so if you are willing, or if you wish to speak in favor, against, or simply ask questions, step right on up. If you'll state your name and address, please, and have at it.
My name is Sean McMullin. I live at 1502 South Central Drive. I'm really just kind of concerned with all the light overflow that's going to be flowing from that way into the southern portion of the neighborhood, as well as it backing up all the way on the north side to the residential plots. So, how much, and I heard them saying that there's not going to be light overflow towards that, but it's a gas station. I'm not sure how, you know, 4,000 square foot building is not going to be igniting a pretty good chunk of the neighborhood. So, yeah, just kind of would like to state that I'm kind of against it, and with there being the store right there, the Dollar General just recently went in. So, that's doing okay, but do we really need a secondary shop right on top of it within a year, you know? So, that's pretty much my 10 cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Heather McMullin, 1502 South Central. I also grew up on countryside. I've lived here all my life. I've seen several gas stations come and go, and I'm against this movement.
Thank you. Last chance. Did we get any written input?
Yes, we did. We received two letters. The commissioners do have copies of both of those. The first one was from Diane and Dennis Morris. They live on Shady Lane Drive, who was strongly opposed to the request. Second letter was from Miriam and Gary Joseph, who live on North Central Drive, who strongly disagree with the request.
Thank you very much. Last opportunity, if anyone here wishes to speak. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will start to my right.
I have a lot of questions.
Somehow I knew that.
Yeah, we'll start with, uh, start with staff.
Okay.
Um, first thing I wanted to ask, is there going to be a left turn access, or not access, but left turn back on to Dayton-Zenia? Is that going to be a right and left?
I believe that the road widening is going to have a center, a center.
Well, I'm talking about pulling out from this new station. Were, were they going to be able to make a left into traffic on Dayton-Zenia at this point? Because I mean, I'm assuming with 36-foot wide, they're going to be able to make a left?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Was that something that the city was opposed to, or was open to?
No, um, no, the city engineer had no problem with the full, full access. They actually originally had shown two access points onto, onto Dayton-Zenia Road, and we got them to consolidate them, move them across from, from Murphy's.
And the engineers no worry about turning left onto Dayton-Zenia?
No.
Okay. Um, and there will be a drive-through in this?
There will be, yes, there will be a drive-through. It will, let's go to the site plan here. So the drive-through is along the back, and then the canopy, there's a canopy over here for them to be able to drive through.
Okay.
And then come out.
Um, the brick that we saw in some of those samples, the city's okay with this limestone wash brick? I mean, it's a, and architecturally, is a pretty harsh-looking kind of brick, especially if around here to mix in with some of our other buildings. I feel like it already looks dated from what we're putting in today. I don't know, architecturally, you guys are okay with the way it sits and?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't really, we didn't find an issue with it. We're try, we try to kind of keep an open mind as far as having some sort of diversity in the colors and, and that, that we have in the city. I think we got into a little bit of a, into a little bit of a habit of, of just having everything be the same color and?
Okay. And is that, there's a picture of a Sunoco in there. Is that also owned by the, the applicant as well?
Yes, this, yes, this is all the same gas station. So this is the, this is?
Oh, it's a Sunoco?
Yeah, it's a Sunoco. Yeah, this one's not a Marathon, it's a Sunoco.
So what we can see here with landscaping and upkeep of the property would be indicative of what we'd probably be seeing with?
Well, I'm not sure of Fairborn's requirements, but as far as our requirements goes, once the landscaping is installed, we release a portion of the bond.
Right. This would be perpetual bond.
And then we hold on to the rest of it to make sure that everything is alive and thriving. And then even after we release that last portion of the bond, we still require perpetual maintenance of all landscaping and do, um, do site properties if they're not keeping up with our, our landscaping.
Do you know how approximately, how old this building is by any?
I, I think it's a couple of years old.
So we're, we're less than 10 years old, and this is the, okay. Um, are there going to be advertisements on the pump? Maybe I need to ask that to the applicant.
Yeah, that's probably it.
Okay. Hang on, I might have one more. Where's that? Hours of operation for this facility? Are there going to be a 24/7 facility?
No, they are not going to be 24/7. They will be open every day, but I believe they will be closing at midnight and opening at 5:00 AM.
Okay.
And we did add a condition of approval that requires, as far as temporary signage goes, one stating that there's no, no temporary signs permitted, so no, like, tobacco signs stuck on the light poles or anything like that. And then we also added a condition that no more than 50% of the window, of each window be covered by signs. So those are both.
Does that include neons as well, or is that?
Yeah, that's, that's any signage, no matter what it is, yeah. It's, it's not only an aesthetic issue, but it's a safety issue.
Okay. Um, I think that's all I have. Are you, are we satisfied with their, their inlay doing the back of the building?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that, that we'll, we'll get it to where we want the back of the building to be. We had a couple of different options and felt like that the inlay is probably the, the best bet.
And is the city, at this point, comfortable moving forward, since we're missing a photometric, since we're missing a lot of, of some of the?
I think the, the photometric isn't as big of an issue. There are a lot of times where we don't have that photometric, just because I believe, well, we have the condition, and, and we have spoken to them about the, making sure that all of the light poles are within landscape islands, and that, you know, the lights be full cutoff fixtures, and, and we will not release any zoning permits if, if there's light spillover. As far as the lighting goes for the property to the north, that back lot isn't going to have any lights on it. And the, the closest house from the northern part of the, that front property is, I think, 270 feet away, so don't anticipate any issues with lighting.
Will the digital signboard that's going to be elevated up on the canopy, will that have then a, the same?
It doesn't have the same standards, but that digital signboard is only facing, it's only pointing west and east, so there's, yeah, there's not going to be one pointing, yeah, we, we did add a condition that only allows one on the west and east elevations.
Because I know sometimes these red, especially red LEDs get quite bright sometimes at night, so, okay. And I just had a quick question for the applicant, then. I appreciate it, thank you.
Can I mention the condition of that site first?
Yeah, yeah.
So I noticed your apprehension there.
I was going to ask you about that. I'd like to have good neighbors here.
So this is actually was an existing gas station site, and the property next door was purchased. So a lot of what you're looking at, as far as the vegetation and the condition of the site, I mean, is 50 years old, you know? So that's not a brand-new site.
Well, no, it's mostly this kind of stuff, that, you know, if you want to pick up trash in your, in your yard and stuff, you know?
Yeah, I can't see it that far away, but I, I can tell that it's on the to-do list every day, and it'll be maintained.
What about advertisements on the pump? Because I know some of them are really loud. Are we going to be putting advertisements on the pump?
Okay, so that's, that's determined by the, the brand. So Marathon would give us like a advertising package or something like that, but typically we don't have that. The only advertising on the pump that you would have would be like digital. It's not like a Speedway where it's blasting TV at you.
That's, I guess that's what I'm asking, like, yes.
Yeah, and all the pumps have the potential for that, too. And then, again, that's dictated by Marathon. So I'm not going to say that it's not going to happen, but there is a, there is a volume control in there. So for instance, like, if you went there at 5:00 AM and you felt like it was too loud, just call us, we'll turn it down for you. And, and the only other advertising that's on the dispenser is there's a pump topper, and it's just like, it's like one foot by eight inches, and it'll say like Marathon Gas is the best in the world, or, you know? Buy Fritos, or it could be whatever they mail to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right on.
What was your question?
That, that was the question.
That was the question.
On where they're going to be doing rolling, because if they're not permitted to have speakers outdoors?
Yeah.
Would you still be allowed to do advertisements if they have audio component to them? That would be part, I would believe.
Sure. I think that, and, and I don't want to speak for her, but I think that's to prevent music from playing all day long. Like, you go some of the older sites in rural areas, and it's very obnoxious, because the employee gets a hold of it and starts pumping Biggie Smalls all day, and, you know?
Yeah, sure.
We've all been to that gas station before, so I, I think the intention, you know, with that restriction is to prevent that type of situation, not, hey, thank you for shopping at Marathon, please come back, you know?
Okay, all right.
It's my understanding.
That was, that was my.
Again, not a deal breaker for us either, so, you know, just so we're clear.
Could I ask staff just real quick to, to give me a little bit of clarity on that one? Because like I said, yes, those Speedway ones are obnoxiously loud, how loud those things are, and is that allowed, since it's an outdoor speaker?
Honestly, what, what I was thinking was, in, in that condition, the way that I wrote it, was just communication between the, between the cashier and?
So there'd be no music, no advertisements, no, it would just be those, just that?
Yes.
Okay, so they couldn't do a audio advertisement, if, even if they had rolling screens?
No.
Okay, okay.
I mean, they could do the screens.
Yeah, just no audio coming from the screen.
Just no audio, yes.
Okay. That was all the questions I have. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thanks for the clarity. Um, those are all the questions I have.
Okay.
I think I've had enough.
I'm sorry. Couple more questions for staff. Sorry, just sat down. Just the record, I enjoyed Biggie Smalls, thank you very much, sir. All right, staff, so we did have some write-ins, and I know you've already addressed these, but just to lay fear, congestion issues, both in the neighborhood and going in and out of?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't imagine that anyone is going to make the effort to go through the neighborhood when, I mean, Dayton-Zenia just seems like a, a much easier avenue to take to get to the gas station. I would imagine that the people who go through the neighborhood are going to be the people in the neighborhood in Knollwood that are going to be visiting the gas station.
Security concerns, has there been any?
We haven't had any, any issues with any of the other gas stations within the city Beaver Creek, as far as, you know, consistent police calls or, or anything like that. We haven't seen any increases in crime or, or, or anything to do with, with the gas stations within the city Beaver Creek.
And then we've talked both noise and light, and I, I believe you already laid those fears, so that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Don't run off. Just a couple of questions and, and an observation. The ground sign is there at the corner of Central and Dayton-Zenia, and it's, it's spaced far enough back so that there's not a line-of-sight problem.
Yeah, we always make sure that, when usually the sign companies come in and apply for the permits, one of the things we look at is to make sure that it's not a line-of-sight issue outside of it, just be, we have the regulation that it be five feet back from the right-of-way, but it also needs to not be an issue with line-of-sight. So if we're ever concerned about it, we'll usually have our engineering department, you know, give us their two cents, and, and we'll figure out a, an appropriate place to put the sign. Trying to get back to the site plan here to take a look at it. So the sign is here. It's, it, according to the site plan, it's a little bit more than five feet back from the right-of-way, but because that's a, you know, a, a busier intersection onto Dayton-Zenia, that's definitely something that, that we will focus on to make sure that it isn't an issue.
And that's the, that will be the new edge of the property, once the, once the?
Correct. They have, yeah, they have actually already acquired the right-of-way along Dayton-Zenia.
That's the green line, then?
Yeah. It act, uh, right before this was, they combined, there was two lots along Dayton-Zenia. Before it was sold, they combined these two lots and dedicated the right-of-way, and then they also dedicated the right-of-way along North Central. It actually used to go out into the middle of the road, so, yeah, that is the future right-of-way there.
And one more question for you. Since it's a B2 zoning, did you look at all of the permitted uses for B2 for the part of the building they're going to rent out? I realize it's going to be somewhat limited by the parking, that there are things that can't go there because there's not enough parking, but did you, did you li, limit anything else?
It did not limit any of the uses of the B2, because it is still a B2 zoning district, and this is, this ASRA overlay is, is simply a way for us to be able to have a little more oversight over the architecture and the site plan. So I didn't add any limitations as far as any, any additional limits to what uses outside of B2. I mean, the entire Dayton-Zenia corridor is zone B2 and?
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't know, you may not know the answer, so I, I'll ask you first, since you're there. Do you have an idea of what the drive-through will be used for?
I will let the, the applicant answer that.
Okay.
I have an idea, but I'll let him speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
So the term "drive-through" might be a little unfair. It's typically referred to it as a "drive-up," because it's just a canopy to protect the user from the rain.
Sorry.
And a window. And typically, what goes out of it would be like pop and chips and small groceries like that, and it's almost always somebody that's elderly that has trouble getting out of the car and going into the store, or mothers with children are really popular in there. So it's not something that pumps all day long, but you do see those two groups, you know, just because of the convenience. You know, it, you take your kid out of the car, and you bring him in the store, and he touches everything, and then comes back, it's 10 minutes, you come up the window, and you're in and out and to daycare on time. So it's kind of a convenience thing more than anything.
Not to mention buckling him in and out.
Yeah, well, then they want to buy stuff, too.
Right.
So you end up spending $6, $7 extra, so, you know.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah.
Something that I would like to bring up to my fellow commissioners here, and that is, I know that they have, both staff and the developer has looked at a row of bushes along the northern edge of what will become the detention pond lot, the one that, the one that directly abuts residential. I'm also thinking that it wouldn't hurt to have a row of bushes at the southern end of that lot, for two reasons. If that drive-through is being used at night, there's going to be headlights in there. And I, it also is going to keep too many kids from cutting through what could become an attractive nuisance, and that's that, that detention pond, realizing it will be dry most of the time. I just think it might be something we, that we might want to add as a condition, you know, on the landscaping, is to put a row of bushes similar to what they have on the north side, on the south side of the, of the pond, of the detention pond.
Isn't it flowing?
Right, but still, there's going to be light spillover from headlights, not to mention the vehicles moving in the, in the parking area. It also will help screen that from, from view. So just a suggestion, gentlemen.
Okay, okay.
Anything else for the, any other questions?
So can we, can I ask the applicant, would, would the applicant be okay with, with some additional landscaping?
Yeah, we're totally cool with extra bushes, or fence, or guardrail, or whatever you think, you know?
Right.
If it's a traffic deterrent, maybe guardrail would make more sense, if we're talking, you know, kids and driving through it, but?
They're, they're going to climb, they're going to climb over the guardrail.
Oh, you're talking about like foot traffic?
Yeah, I'm talking about people shortcutting in there, the kids shortcutting instead of going all the way around. I just think a row of bushes, maybe with thorns on them, no, not really.
Roses?
But just a row, just a row of bushes along that southern edge of that pond would work.
We're totally amicable to that, yeah.
Okay. Do we need to do that as an amendment, then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Somewhere in the, in the section where, where it talks about landscaping, one of the?
So do we want to? I mean, it kind of fits into four. Steve, we want to do these as two separate motions for the, the, we need to amend one condition, and then we need to add another one for the break tiers. So do we want to do them as two separate, and then a full motion from there?
Well, there's noth, there's nothing right now in the, in any of the conditions that specifically talk about the row of bushes along the, along the back northern edge of that.
Well, I think it's shown on the plan.
Okay.
See, that one, the row of bushes on the, to the north are already shown on the plan, so the motion would be to add them to the south, but then you also have the other condition that is under request.
How would we, I don't think we've ever done that before.
You can add, you can add the bushes to condition number four, where it says a detailed landscape plan shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department prior to execution. An additional row of bushes along the?
Southern edge of the?
Southern edge of the, the northern lot shall be shown on that final landscape plan.
My question would be, is it required? Wouldn't we, wouldn't we just leave four as it is, and you, as the staff, take a note to ensure that that's in there before approval?
No, I think you'd want to add, I would agree you want to add in, but the, the only thing you might want to say is the bushes to the south, the bushes, as you're saying, under, as of the same type and caliber as the ones to the north?
Yeah, yes.
Right, okay.
Say to the, to the south of the detention pond.
So that would be one motion, then you have a motion to add number?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, I believe, right?
Well, the maker, whoever makes the, the motion can add those as part of the motion that they are making, and then we vote on it just once.
Just put them both in the same motion?
Yep.
If you want.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I move to amend condition four to include the recently agreed-upon language that, that our city lawyer has so kindly given us. And I would also like to add a 21st condition, and again, help me with the language here a little bit, Steve, but that all piers in the fueling canopy would be encased in brick, constructed of a brick outer layer, however we want that to read.
I think the outer layer comprised of brick is? I think the outer layer comprised of brick is, I suspect.
Of like kind, of matching kind to match the architecture of the rest of the building.
Because the interior is probably steel, isn't it?
Yeah, I would imagine.
So it's not all solid.
Yeah, we're not building, I know, yeah, we're building them out of brick.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And that's for the, that's for the whole thing or just for the amendments?
Just the amendments.
Just the amendments?
Those were amendments.
Okay.
The amendments and additions.
Okay, we'll vote on the amendments first.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. The, the amendments. Additions pass three zero. Now we'll vote on the whole ball of wax with the amendments.
I was waiting for Mr. Height there, but I will go ahead and move to approve PC twenty-six ASRA.
With the attached twenty-one.
With the attached twenty-one condition.
As amended.
Yeah, as amended.
I second.
Now we shall vote.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries three zero, and we are done with public hearings. And we will, anybody want to take a break for a minute before we push, press?
If you need one, we're gone.
We need, we need to get our, our fourth member back from exile.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing what, what happens. Welcome back. Now we have three subdivisions.
I will try to make these quick. So the first, first case is case number S twenty-five, a final subdivision. The applicant is requesting approval of a final subdivision for 2.2954 acres of land north of the intersection of Stedman Lane and Dayton-Zenia Road. So the applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing lot into two separate lots. Lot number one will be approximately 1.2 acres and lot number two will be 1.0 acres. I believe the applicant's plan is to sell the, the lot, which is lot number one with the house on it, and then he plans on building a, a separate house on lot number two. Both of these lots will be, continue to be zoned R1A. They, as they are, as they're split, as they're shown, they will still meet all of the requirements of the R1A zoning district, 20,000 square foot minimum, as well as 100 feet wide at the, at the right of way. Comment sheets were routed out to the area agencies. They all recommended approval or approval with conditions. There is one condition that we added, that because a new lot is being created, they are required to pay park fees for that new lot. So that will be required before, before we sign off on the record plan. So staff is recommending approval of this plat with the four conditions in the attached staff report. And I can answer any questions that you have now.
Thank you. I'm just going to kind of throw this one open, this is pretty easy. I do have one question for you.
Sure.
According to the plat, it says it's in Montgomery County.
Yeah, that, that is one of the corrections that we noted that they do need to make before we sign off on the plat.
There we go, okay. I just thought maybe the county line had moved and nobody told us. Gentlemen, anything? Okay? Thank you very much, and we'll vote on this and be done with it.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S twenty-five with the attached four conditions.
Mr. Chair, I second.
I have a motion and a second. Let's read the roll.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries four zero. And we'll move right along to Alpha Schoolhouse plat.
The next case before you is a final subdivision for the Alpha Schoolhouse plat, case number S twenty-six. The applicant is requesting approval of a final subdivision for approximately 2.8 acres of land at the intersection of Dayton-Zenia Road, Alpha Road, and Whitey Marshall Drive. Property is currently two separate parcels, and the applicant is proposing to split those into three, three lots. Lot one will contain the house, most, the westernmost house, and will be approximately 0.537 acres. Lot two will contain the, the easternmost house, and I believe it was the former schoolhouse. And that lot will be 0.48 acres. And then lot three is vacant and will, will remain vacant until someone, if someone decides to, to build on that third lot. And that one will be approximately 0.88 acres. As you can see by the plat, the applicant is dedicating a significant amount of right of way to the city. Just because of the original configuration of the lot, you can see that the right of way extended out into, I mean, the, the property lines extended out into the middle of the road and then regarding Dayton-Zenia, all the way out past Dayton-Zenia. So all of that will be dedicated to the city, which will clean that up a little bit. I believe the main reason for having this portion here is for the sanitary sewer. I believe that was the case. One of the, the biggest issues with this entire property is that the, almost all of this western half, all the way through here, is within the regulatory floodplain. So none of that can be built on. They would be able to build a driveway there, but, but that's it, there's nothing else that could be built. So as far as lot three goes, the build, buildable area would be in this area here for a house, so. Staff, staff is recommending approval with the four conditions, as was the case in the previous case. Because we are creating new buildable lots, park fees will also be required before we release the record plan. If you have any questions, I can answer those now.
Thank you very much. Folks, questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. So why would, why would they want to do this? I mean, I have feelings on maybe why they might do this from a tax perspective, but I'm trying to understand.
I don't believe it's for tax perspective. I think she wants to sell the property. She bought the property as an investment.
Yeah.
And, and feels now that, that she can split it into three lots. We worked with her for quite a bit of time to try to figure out a configuration that would work. And this is, I mean, this is, for three lots is as good, as good as it gets.
But if it's unbuildable, I mean, why are we selling it?
It's, I mean, it's build, it's, it is buildable. The, the question is, does, so will someone want to buy it and, and build in that area that is?
And it's still zoned, or it's still zoned residential?
It's zoned residential, the lots meet the residential requirements. I, I think she's fully aware that it's not the most attractive lot for a prospective buyer. But she decided that she wanted to move forward anyway. So, and then because it meets the require, it meets all of our requirements. There, there really isn't any reason for us to, to recommend denial.
Okay.
With a rear yard setback though, there is.
When you have a triple frontage lot like that, there is no rear yard setback. So, yeah.
And it's over there too.
That helps.
Yeah.
Okay, if I don't have any further questions, I just was curious why in the world you would subdivide into an unbuildable lot that you could never sell?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're all scratching our heads over that. Gentlemen, further comments, questions? Thank you for working with them. You did the best you could. Okay, I guess we'll need a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S twenty-six with the attached four conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I second.
I have a second, thank you. And now we'll have a vote.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries four zero. And we are down to our last subdivision, that's the West Banco. I think this is another easy one.
This one is much more simple. So this is a final subdivision, case number S twenty-seven. It's simply when the West Banco was approved by Planning Commission and City Council in July of 2020, we added a condition that required that they record a final subdivision. That way we can create a lot also, so that we would be able to record the cross-access easement across the property. And then also what's not shown on here is the detention easement that we normally require over the detention pond. So that if necessary, our engineering department would, would be able to, to maintain that pond if necessary. Just a simple, nothing's changing. The, the right of way was already dedicated, so the, the parameters of the parcel are remaining the same. It's simply just going to be a lot, lot one of the West Banco subdivision, and staff is recommending approval with the three conditions in the attached staff report. And then agencies, the area agencies that we routed it out to also all recommended approval as well. If you have any questions, I can answer those now.
Gentlemen, just one for you. I presume that easement goes, easement goes to the north lot line as well as the south.
That is correct.
So eventually, when that develops, we'll have all the way down.
Yes.
It just takes a while.
That's the goal.
Like Park Overlook Drive, took us 20 years.
We're patient.
Yes. Okay, gentlemen, I need a, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S twenty-seven with the attached three conditions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I second.
And I have a second. And we'll read this one for a vote.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries four zero. We have two discussion items left, the land use plan amendment, B.C. Golf Limited Partnership. And that's the one you're going to be addressing. Correct, Randy? Okay.
And, Mr. Chair and the members, I'm going to recuse myself just because of some involvement with abutting property to this particular piece of property. So I will recuse myself from discussion and any involvement with this particular one.
So we're going to be councilless on this?
I play a lawyer on TV, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a discussion item on a proposed amendment to our land use plan. I know that the land use plan is still, the 2020 version is still, actually still hasn't been finalized yet. It got to the first reading at city council at their last meeting and anticipate on, on this coming Monday to be the second reading and, and at that point anticipate that they would vote approval for that. But I've been in discussion with the, Mr. Kozler and his client about the potential for some, you know, multifamily development at this property that's just northeast of the southern portion of the golf course on the south side of New Germany Trebine. As you can see in the land use plan, it's currently designated as low-density residential, up to three dwelling units an acre. And there is single-family residential just to the west of this, and that is at about three dwelling units an acre. And then to the north is some multifamily condos on the other side of the street. And I think that's around four dwelling units an acre, and then it's a little higher in this area here, which is also a multifamily residential. In order for a land use, a plan amendment to occur with the current 2015 land use plan, the only way a amendment could be initiated is by direction of the, either the city council or the planning commission. And that's what we're here this evening is to get some direction and potentially, if planning commission sees fit, a, a, I guess, an order, for the lack of a better word, an order for us to initiate a land use plan amendment. And, and what that would be, would, we would advertise within, within everybody within 500 feet of anywhere that we're proposing to, to amend the land use plan. And then they would come back to the next planning commission meeting for the typical public hearing. And then in order for to amend the land use plan, actually, it would go to city council and then they would make a vote. It would be done by legislative action, so it would be two readings at a city council meeting. And each of those would be public hearings as well, notifying everybody within 500 feet. The applicant had, I guess it wouldn't be applicant yet, but the, the, Mr. Kozler, whom I've had discussions with, is here this evening to, he can speak further on any specifics. The area, you can see in yellow, is the area that's within the, the city. It is, excuse me, I believe it's around 28 acres, 27, 28 acres. And then there are also three acres highlighted in green that's actually outside of the city. But they're looking to do a potential annexation and bring it into the city. So that, this, any land use plan amendment wouldn't have effect on that. I just wanted to point out that, that if this were ever to move forward, it would include those three acres, and those three acres would be annexed into the city as part of it. They had given some initial renderings on, on their ideas of what they're looking for. But that's, it's fairly preliminary on that. So I just wanted to get your thoughts on that and see what, see if you had any direction you wanted us to move, and, and we'll move accordingly. But again, the applicant, I keep saying applicant. Mr. Kozler, Kozler is here, and I'm sure that he has further input to give if planning commission would like to hear him speak.
Thank you.
And if you're looking for a recommendation, you know, we recommend that we would move forward with the, with the amendment request. This isn't an amendment, this is just for us requesting you to order us to amend.
Okay, so we're really not looking for any specifics on?
This is just.
Just the generalities?
We're going over the idea and seeing, and on planning commission's appetite for it.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions of Mr. Kozler, we got him here.
Glad to be back.
It's been a while.
I think kind of the, what's driving the, the, our interest in, in looking at getting overall density changes, it's, we've got existing six-unit per, you know, medium density in the northern part of that number 17 area, at the east part of it. And we are sensitive to the single-family housing that's in there. And what we want to do is be able to move more of the units to, in the northern area, which is completely across from the golf course and closer to the multifamily, and then leave a, more of the woods and buffer area at the end of the single-family homes. And then we can work then down towards, towards the, to the south part of that piece is the pond, existing detention pond. And so we've, we haven't come up with a complete design yet. But we're looking at like a clubhouse and pool, pushing it back away from the single-family, keeping everything away from the single-family as much as possible, kind of moving more of the, more of the units up in the northern area where it's kind of sits down a little lower, but yet the backs of the units can face the golf course. But we also look at it, keeping a fairly significant buffer from the golf course and, and more of a buffer than at the end of the single-family housing. So it seems like if we can shift the buildings around in there and still keep our overall density, it would work out pretty good. But that's, that's just kind of the idea, there's been a change, more, more desire for rental units, condo or purchase, rental and purchase type property in the area. And they, we have done, had a, a, a study done, a marketing study done to, to make sense that this, there is a demand for these number of units in this area.
Gentlemen, questions?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. So your, your intentions are to turn these into apartments and condos, or I mean?
We're looking at apartments, they, the marketing study said there is a desire for a rent-to-own type situation. And we haven't really, you know, zeroed in on what to do exactly. So I think what the initial aspect of it is, is to, is a rental, rental units, apartments. And it, it takes a certain number to justify doing a development, but you got to set up a, a management office and have onsite people, you know, full-time to kind of oversee, make sure that everything's going well. And with the eight acres at six units to the acre, ends up with only so many, so many units that doesn't hardly justify the clubhouse amenities, a swimming pool, whatever other amenities you put in and to make a really nice, nice development.
Would we be opposed to dividing this into two pieces somehow? So it would, so we could guarantee that single-family would be protected and that we wouldn't put a bunch of apartments, literally? I mean, without any condition, you're going to be able to put apartments. Like, I know the intention is not to, but again, I read and.
Yeah, I know, that's.
Edit enough contracts to know if it's in there, I gotta, I gotta look at it as a possibility.
The eastern property line has a power line running along it, and it's about 100-foot easement. So that, if it were reversed, that would be ideal. You'd have another area, another 100-foot buffer, but we can't really. You'd have another area, another 100-foot buffer, but we can't really build underneath that. But our thoughts were to, to keep the units as far to the east as possible in the lower section, and then keep, you know, 75-foot, 100, I don't know what distance, until you get in and start looking at the contour of the land, because sometimes to make sure that would blend in and keep in the trees. Right now, you can't see in probably 10 feet into the, inside the property. Of course, the wintertime, it's a whole different situation. But, you know, we, we would like to, you know, what we're looking at is, we were looking at a higher number, the typical project would be, gets up into the higher end, a lot, a lot more these days to make it justifiable, but the, the medium density would be probably the least we could, could do. Like I said, I would consider keeping the units away from the single-family.
Okay. And we've, we've got many times to go at this again, right, Randy? I mean, is that, is that fair to, to ask staff? Like, I mean, is this something that we're, we're gonna have to go through multiple stages to get this to where we would like it? This is just, hey, are we, do we have an appetite for...
That's correct. This is just, this is just potentially to get to a land use plan amendment, which is a broad stroke, broad brush, say, in the whole area, six dwelling units an acre. You would, in order for them to do anything, you would have to go through a rezoning. Well, right now, the northern half is, if that is zoned for six dwelling units an acre, and the southern half is zoned for three dwelling units an acre. But for them to make it work, they have to shift that a little bit and get it lower density on the southern end and higher density on the northern end, but an overall density still of six dwelling units an acre. But when we get to, if we got, got to a zoning phase, we can, we can always establish buffers and saying, this area could only be at three dwelling units an acre, and this area is where it can be up to nine, because the overall is gonna be six, and, and that kind of thing.
The, the last concern that I have is, is I tend to, my drives tend to go to the right, and this concerns me, that I'll buy, be buying more roofs and windows than I normally would in the season, so that's my only other concern that I have.
We can, we can make sure they maintain the trees along the property, and hopefully catch a few years.
So no, that's, that's all I had. I'm sorry. Thank you. I appreciate it. Those are all the questions I had.
Gentlemen? I do have one, not really a question, but just an observation. When we approved the single-family, the existing single-family, we were looking at additional single-family on the, on the southern part of this property. So that street is stubbed out, and I would simply make the observation that if that were to be, if that portion of the property were to be made multifamily, you don't normally have single-family, multifamily connecting streets. So there would have to be some kind of a turn circle put in there, and it would be on your property, because there's no place to put it otherwise.
There's currently an, an existing, I don't know, 60-foot, or say 50-foot radius, or 60-foot easement was recorded when the single-family went in. It was recorded, but they didn't build the pavement.
Right.
I think at one time it might have been gravel.
And now it's grass.
But it wasn't as big as it would normally, a normal cul-de-sac would be.
Right.
And now you can't hardly tell it, because the trees have kind of grown out over top of what's there, and no, nobody really turned around down there.
Right.
It wasn't big enough for, for, I guess, the garbage trucks, or tricyclentrucks have to, I imagine they'd go down and back up to the first cul-de-sac before they can turn around, so...
Right. But that would be, that would be just something for staff to keep in the, kind of in the back of your head on this, because we were expecting that street to continue. You know, how, how we're always trying to make, make those streets connect all the time, and this way, we're gonna have to unconnect it.
Right.
So, other than that, gentlemen? Do, do you need a motion from us, or simply a sense of the commission?
I, just a general acclamation. There's no resolution required or no...
Just are we open? Are we open to hearing about it?
Yes. As long as you guys nod, give me the, give me the affirmative nod. I think I can move forward.
I would say, yeah. As far as I'm concerned, gentlemen?
Yeah, because the next step will be for us to actually do an advertisement in the paper and send out letters everywhere within 500 feet, so they're duly noted that there's gonna be a public hearing at the next Planning Commission meeting on this.
Good? You got, you got the sense of us. Okay, last item.
Last item. I just need a sense from you guys, too. So I, I don't have an aerial photo in, in my slide, so I just, I'm gonna stick to this one for a second, just to show you the area that we're talking about. So this discussion item is for Bent Creek Woods, which is Canterbury Trails, Section 11, which is here off of New Jeremy Trebine. I think you can see part of the road. It kind of curls around. I believe that's hole two, hole two and hole three of the golf course, and what was approved there as Section 11 was 60 single-family lots. So as I stated, Bent Creek Woods was approved in April of 2005, and at that time, a condition was placed on that approval that required that any builder other than J and E, which was the original builder who came in to develop the entire property, if any other builder were to come in after them, they would need to get their elevations approved by the Planning Commission. The condition didn't, didn't state in any way that it needed to be a modification or there needed to be a resolution. It just said Planning Commission needs to basically give the okay. So J and E is no longer building homes within this development. So JMD, who owns the property, is selling all of the lots individually. So as they're selling them individually, each, each, each person who buys a lot has their own builder. So now we're kind of in this little quandary where more than likely, you guys are gonna have to approve each builder as we go through this for the, the remaining 55 lots. So we received a permit in our office a couple of days ago for lot 73 on Bentgrass, Bentgrass Drive, and RM Clemens is, is the applicant for the permit, and they're the ones that are, are going to be building the lot, the house on lot 73. So just really quickly, I want to show you the types of houses, the types of materials that were approved originally. Then I'm gonna show you just really quickly his elevations that were included in the, in the permit, and then I'm going to show you a couple of examples of the type of work that Mr. Clemens does. He has done a couple of developments in the city of Beaver Creek before. Ashland Hills is a Clemens development off of Grange Hall Road. So we feel that his product is very similar to, to what was intended for this, for this site. So just, let me put this into the presentation. So these were the types of homes that were, I would say, expected in this neighborhood. And going back and reviewing the video, they're talking about, at the time, $500,000 homes, roughly in that price range. There were conditions as far as the size, that they be a minimum of 2,400 square feet if they were gonna be a single-story, that they use natural materials, no aluminum fascias or anything like that. This one's mostly ifus and brick. Another fully brick one. This one's mostly ifus with stone. And then this is the home that he's proposing. So this house is approximately 2,500 square feet. It's, it's brick, it's stone, it has the shake, shake siding as well, and all of that's continued to the back. It's fully brick, which is also one of the expectations of that development, that all of the sides, you know, have that full masonry. And then these are some of the houses that he has built recently. So they all have kind of those, the same architectural, I guess, expectations, I would say, that, that we were looking at when Bent Creek was approved originally. So really, I, I just need you guys to say, no, I don't think this is similar, or yes. Go ahead. Let this guy have his permit. So it's up to you guys.
Gentlemen?
I just got a question. Can we repeal that condition? So we don't have to do this 55 more times over the next decade?
One down, 54 to go.
And also, how do you get a condition like that?
Yeah, we'll have to look at this.
That seems a little...
Yeah, I have a feeling, just especially since it was like, it was this, so we have the, the motion and all of these conditions, and then this is literally the last one. I have a feeling someone just tacked it on the end at City Council, and, and that's what we ended up with.
It's rather unusual. So it seems a little glad-handed there.
I think, you know, let us look at this, since this unfortunately just sort of was a last-minute kind of thing here, but I think it would be nice to look at and see if we can, because that's what I was thinking. 55 times, yeah.
I honestly don't, you know, a lot of, lot of water over the dam since 2005, but I don't remember this, and this is unusual enough, so I would have remembered it.
Yeah, I feel like it, it had to have been a condition that may have been added on at council.
At council.
In the very last minute, just, even, even the wording of it just doesn't seem very...
Well, interesting, isn't it?
Yeah.
Love to know who, who put that condition in there.
John.
Oh, no, that's, I'm, I don't know. Let's do it. Yes.
I think we're all good with it. Gentlemen? We're all good with this?
Thank you.
One down, 54 to go, gentlemen. See what we can do about that.
But did you want a, a formal motion, though?
No.
No? Okay. All right. I just want to make sure.
Gentlemen, we are fresh out of agenda items unless staff has something else for us. No, we are good. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the August 2020 meeting of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chair, I second.
And we are at 7:43. Thank you, gentlemen. See you in September.